I am offering regrets from Mr. McElveen, who is out of the country on business, and Ms. Darrenat Kofax, who is in Richmond at the State Equity Symposium. And so with that, I am going to turn over this portion of the meeting to Ms. Schultz, who will be talking about CPDC.
So we had a, for the first time since I've been on the board, we had, we attempted to meet on a, on a regular basis over the course of this past year with CPDC, which comprised three members of this board and one from the Fairfax City Board. And the endeavor was to have discussions with FPAC, Karen Hogan regularly attended our meetings, Mr. Plattenberg, who was here, and/or Mr. Sneed, and Mr. Smith, when you can make it. And Mr. Smith is our acting, I believe, our acting. Congratulations.
Yes, Dr. Braybrand is out of town, so Mr. Smith is our acting superintendent this evening.
I just wanted to acknowledge that. And over the course of this past year, we talked about the challenges that face this division on a going-forward basis and how we might best address some of those. A lot of those are things that the board has discussed over the course of CIP discussion or a budget discussion. Certainly whether or not we have an ongoing, successful joint infrastructure committee with the Board of Supervisors. And the, and the challenges on elevating some of the facility needs with the Board of Supervisors and the community, and solving things like, how do we address the, a plan for trailers? How do we address a 30-year renovation cycle? How do we address almost a billion-dollar backlog in our infrastructure needs? And, and only building, you know, capacity if and when, you know, we've got the, you know, some portion of the capital dollars from the Board of Supervisors. We have an inverse relationship on square footage of facilities to the dollars from the Board of Supervisors. It's roughly about 60% of the facilities, combined of the Board of Supervisors and the school board, are on the school board's side, but only about 40% of the dollars. We have had a, you know, a temporary salvo in, an increase in the capital dollars from the Board of Supervisors. We don't know how long that will last. And our needs are not getting smaller, they're getting greater. And there is really only two times a year where the board sort of is intentional or is at least meeting on facility needs. And that's during the capital improvement plan. But we don't really address the needs, per se. We sort of talk about the future, not how, not necessarily how to address it. And then when we get to the FPAC annual presentation. FPAC has done a marvelous job in building sort of a cadre of recommendations over time, but they are a little bit frustrated in, in sort of where that stands and feel that, from their perspective, there does need to be an elevation of this board's work on facilities with the Board of Supervisors. And I think that the intentionality of that is what the committee came up with and said, it, it's time to, and I, I know in the long history of this board way in the past, there was sort of an alignment of standing committees to the work of the division. And then there was an ebb and flow away from that because people felt like, well, we shouldn't align necessarily our work to what staff does, that staff's work. But it's, it's a very big pressing need. It looks like we're going to break 190,000 students come, you know, what, three weeks, three, four weeks from now. And the question's to become, where are the needs? Not necessarily just that there are needs, but where are the needs? And for the first time this year, we got a heat map, for example, on pre-K and where the pre-K needs are. But we're never able to really meet the needs of an 800-student pre-K list because there aren't the facilities. Well, we don't have the facilities. And this is a, a collaboration between the Board of Supervisors and the school board in terms of making the resources available. But it really is inherently, the underlying thing is a, a facility's need. So sort of at the core, if we don't have the projections right, nothing else is right thereafter. Everything we do is a facility need. Every, every person who comes to work, actually on the administrative side, is coming to work in a facility. And all the students are coming to work in a, are coming to school in a facility. And where we're headed with, you know, questions of boundaries and trailers and expansion and do we need to look at, you know, alternate, like we did with Bailey's Crossroads, alternate types of acquisitions of facilities. There just ultimately was a decision between the members of the committee, which was a unanimous decision, and in conjunction with the FPAC members, that CPDC not remain anymore, just, oh, by the way, get together when somebody leaves FPAC and review resumes. That really there's a much greater need for intentionality of this board to pay attention to, look at, work across the aisle with the Board of Supervisors and frankly, members of the community, you know, businesses, et cetera, to try to help us establish a strategic plan specifically around facilities' needs going forward.
So your ask is what?
Ask is just to make CPDC a standing committee of the board and take on regular recommendations from the board, just like we do with governance. There's a referral and, and tasking from the board to committees for public engagement, for governance, not so much for audit, but that, a comprehensive planning and development committee could be tasked by this board to elevate the focus of the needs of the division on facilities' needs going forward.
Thank you. I presume you're leading this portion of the work session?
I guess I, I guess.
And I see that Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Palchuk, followed by Ms. Strauss.
Thank you for that report, Mrs. Schultz. I, I do support, and I've always supported, having CPDC be a robust committee. I mean, I believe it is a standing committee. It is still a standing committee, but it, it went into a, a mode after FPAC where so much of its work was just, as you said, replacing FPAC members. So I support the direction.
Just to clarify, you're, you're correct. It is a standing committee. I, I, maybe the better word is functional, a functional standing committee.
With some work. How would you anticipate that you would get your direction? And, I mean, for example, we've got a CIP. Would you anticipate that the CIP would first be vetted by the committee, or would you not? Let's take that as an example.
I, I would imagine that enhancements or improvements to the CIB, CIP could be looked at earlier in the process because quite often we kind of get it and it's, we're really advanced in that stage. So we could help facilitate any recommendations of the board by looking at it and working with staff earlier. And if there are specific directions, and I, I get the sense that there are, specifically around things like, I mean, I think it was probably five years ago when I did the calculation that the trailers back then, you know, at 23 per, per, 23 students per class, which is high, but it's, it was an average. If we reclaimed that, we would reclaim 6,125 seats. I mean, these are, these are really good issues around, too, the safe and secure schools, you know? Can we get children back into brick and mortar? You know, so, so absolutely it would be in concert with, with the recommendations from board, but working sort of ahead of the curve and not waiting until that one point when the CIP hits and then later in the spring when FPAC delivers their report.
So for example, does, does CPDC have a list of agenda items specifically that they wanted to take up in the, in the coming year? You mentioned trailers. Is that something that you're asking this board to authorize you to take a look at?
The list was long, so I think that the, the list needs to be discussed by the board in terms of what they would like the charge to be. But certainly it was trailers, the renovation queue, the 30-year renovation queue, the, a joint infrastructure relationship. Do we want to re-initiate a joint infrastructure committee with the Board of Supervisors? Capital funding needs beyond what maybe the Board of Supervisors confide, you know, alternate means of funding. So I mean, it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty big list.
So at some point, you would bring this list to the board, or?
Yes, I would bring, I would bring a list to the board to say, okay, these are what, but I would think it's best to do that under a constituted, with this, with the newly constituted CPDC for this coming year.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I have Ms. Palchuk, followed by Ms. Strauss, Mr. Moon, and Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I have a question that I believe since my time, we, CPDC hasn't had that regular role. I guess I was wondering, and as Ms. Evans and I have had discussions with the Planning Commission, is the conversation of having more joint work with the county, even looking at the CIP in unison and doing a lot more work in unison? So I guess I was wondering how CPDC, if CPDC had that conversation or if there was kind of a vision of how to better integrate what we do with the county side?
It wasn't as much a unified CIP because I think that that was maybe some side conversations that were happening with or about the, the Planning Commission. And that's part of the problem is, is that there's, there's sort of a, like, a not bifurcated, almost like a trifurcated, layered conversation. And this would allow us as a board to sort of be intentional and say, look, what we would like to do is, and X may be, approach the Board of Supervisors on how to maybe marry the two CIPs. Or, I mean, really, the, the part of the conversation that had to do with that, that we discussed, was more around the funding and, and how we get, for example, the focus on the wear and tear of our facilities and the community use. I mean, how much our facilities are used versus some of the facilities, not all of the facilities on the county side. But to have some parity discussions around funding and building use and, and have that part of the conversation. Certainly, if that's the direction that the board would like to go is to say, look, we need to, you know, sort of broker conversations with the Board of Supervisors, not, not at the Planning Commission level, but sort of above the Planning Commission level because, of course, we're peers to the Board of Supervisors, is to be more intentional about how we allocate resources across the county to facilities, not be second or third tier once we hit schools.
Right, so I guess my, oh.
One thing I will suggest, I'm going to remind everybody that this is going to go until 5 o'clock and we're going to have a vote at 5 on the intentionality of the work. Just giving people a time check.
So I guess my only advocacy would be in order to not have, not have separate conversations because we, we have been working on policy work with the Planning Commission. That includes a lot of this, these conversations. So it would be that if this were to happen, and while I understand we want the work to happen with the Board of Supervisors as well, is that at least one, if not two, of the liaisons to the Schools Committee be represented on CPDC, just so that there's not that break of communication. That's the only thing that I think.
To the Schools, what Schools Committee?
So currently, well, this year, Ms. Evans and I have been the liaisons to the Joint FCPS Planning Commission Schools Committee, where we're looking at this rewriting, you know, work together to rewrite some of their policies. And so I just think it would be important to be able to have that conversation. So with that in mind, I think it's important. I just want to make sure there aren't two sort of parallel avenues of work.
Right. And I would, and I would encourage them. One of the things that I spoke with Ms. Corbett Sanders about was I think that there's a good reason to cross-populate. There's no reason why if somebody is a, a facilities liaison to the board, to the Planning Commission, then they should come to a CPDC meeting. Even if they're not on, I think that's, that becomes important. That becomes important to build those relationships that I think heretofore have not necessarily happened around the facilities discussion from the board. Not that it's not happening at the staff level, but, you know, the, the needs are getting more pressing every academic year and we're not really changing the conversation. So this is our opportunity to change the conversation.
And your comment is well noted. And that's being taken into account in committee recommendations. So I have Ms. Strauss, Mr. Moon, and Ms. McLaughlin.
On the one hand, I was very, very pleased to see the recasting of this year's CIP because I think that in the way the maps were laid out, at least I found in talking with the Drainsville community, people could see where the needs were and they can see the direction. So we're going to have to go in. Boundary changes and, and difficult decisions by all of us. In recasting the job of CPDC, on the one hand, there is a great deal of work to be done, obviously with buildings and renovations that are, are still way too far behind. But it's also very important that when we face these decisions that, that we are working as, as a whole board. And therefore, I'm, I'm pleased to see the recognition that the work of the group is set by the entire board because it's going to take all of us to make the decisions that we know are going to have to be made. I, I agree that close partnership with the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission is absolutely critical. Reuse of public buildings, better adjusted boundaries to avoid as much as possible resegregating schools by, by income because that often becomes the indicator for also separation by, by race, ethnicity, what have you. But we know that income, as much as we can, we need to, to balance our schools so that everybody has a, a combination of basically housing stock as best we can. I think that that's the short of that. So on the one hand, I think I, there is more work to be done. And if, as a group, we can discuss exactly what the charge to this group will do and that we are, are led to group discussions and group decisions, then I can support this. There is a lot of work to be done. But again, I have, our most recent staff organization of our CIP, I think, has helped us a lot in setting the stage for what it is that we're going to have to do. Thanks.
I, I wouldn't disagree with you. And those are what things I've championed with Mr. Plattenberg for probably the entire time I've been on the board. So I was very pleased to see the CIP improvements.
They're doing excellent.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean it's where we wanted to be, but, but it's definitely, you know, momentum is easier to maintain than generate.
Right, exactly.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. McLaughlin. And then I think we're going to conclude this conversation.
Just to, you know, just to make sure that I understand your advocates correctly. So you want to wait until the members on the CPDC are appointed first and the CPDC will come up with the proposed changes to the governance manual regarding the charge of CPDC? Is that?
No, I think we're just going to, what we're asking for now is for the charge to be led by the board's decision tonight. And then the reconstituted CPDC under the new organization and the new chair and vice chair, yourself, would come up with the list of things and bring it back to the board and say, okay, this, you know, here's some of the recommendations we have for us to focus on this coming year. You know, we're going to almost create our self-charge, but then the full board would have to approve the charge.
So tonight, what you are seeking is just go, just have a blessing on the concept of CPDC becoming just like any other, any other.
Yeah, a functional.
Functionally.
Right, because heretofore, basically, you know, for, for five years, the only purpose CPDC had, the only actual purpose, was to vet resumes of people appointed to the FPAC and make a recommendation to the board to replace FPAC members.
Right.
And that, and that's very much not intentional in addressing the needs. And, you know, a billion-dollar backlog, almost, and a 30-year renovation cycle and all of the other issues of meeting the needs isn't changing, it's actually getting more complex. And we haven't changed the way that we, as a board, look at that pressing need. And so this creates the opportunity for us to say, we are going, we're deciding to be intentional about these pressing needs and we're going to work as a committee to, to work through whatever the charge is of the board, but be intentional with staff. Look at things earlier in the CIP. Look at ways to leverage the, the relationship with the Board of Supervisors, either at an existing level of a liaison status or even potentially otherwise. Maybe look at experts. I mean, the, all of those things exist as possibilities, but the, the committee as it stood up until last month wanted to recommend that the CPDC become a functional committee to take on that work as charged by the board.
Yeah, yeah, I think I get that. As I'm looking at the governance manual, I think the charge as currently stated is to design a recommendation for a comprehensive planning process, monitor the process, and suggest improvements to the board. So what you're asking is if there is an agreement from the board, tasking children vice chair basically modify the charge. Is that, am I?
Or the committee can do itself and bring, and look at any recommendations to the language that needs to change, but this is the conceptual change.
As, as since, since I'm the vice chair, I don't know whether, whether I want to have that, that task upon myself to come up with or something rather than.
I think that between CPDC and governance, we could recommend any language that would need to change within the governance manual itself. But I, we run the governance manual, the governance manual doesn't run us. And so this is our opportunity to say, conceptually, this is what we would like to do. And if there needs to be a change to the governance language, we can certainly recommend that.
So another, another question that I have to myself and other board members, including the chairman, is that currently stated under, under governance manual, there are supposed to be four members, but one of them is a Fairfax City Board member. So with expanded, if it gets expanded, the role of the CPDC gets expanded. Do you think that is a, you know, compared to other standing committees where we do not include any city board member as a standing committee member, whether it is appropriate to have three county, one city for this expanded task war? That has to be given another thought.
I actually think that at the beginning, CPDC was two of ours and one city. And, and this is the expanded role, is the third member from this board? I don't think, I think if you grow it beyond that, you're, you're, you're just getting to a subset of the board. And there's a lot of different committee work and appointments to be done. So I think if you just add another person from this board, I mean, we, we did not contemplate that. We did not find the mix to be not conducive to the work that we saw needed to be done. And I do think because Fairfax City bonds its own buildings and they have their own buildings and because of that cross-jurisdictional relationship, I do think it would not be wise to not have a Fairfax City member on. So I think the mix of three to one actually is appropriate.
And the competition is, I'm not, if, if it's expanded role, the CPDC is going to be playing, I have to give a little more thought about the competition, actually, whether, whether, no disrespect to the city board, but having city board to be one of the four is an appropriate level of participation we should be seeking from the city when the city is just four schools out of 200 schools in terms of facility-wise. So I need to have a little more time to give, you know, again, as a former, I mean, I still the liaison to the city board. And I don't want to disrespect my colleagues on the city board and the, and the importance of the relationship and the role they can play. But if the scope gets expanded, probably, in, in my mind, the competition has to be redone.
Only thing I would say is I, I do believe that we grew CPDC already to sort of create more roles for people on this board. So, you know, it was, I mean, it's pretty large already to begin with as a member of, as for. If you all want to cut Fairfax City out of the role that they had standing, that's not for me to decide. I mean, if the board decides that as a whole, I, I'm not sure.
Can I give you a slightly, would you consider, since you're going to go with your reconstituted committee if we approve that tonight, and that group is going to decide on a scope for it? Maybe it's more appropriate for that group, including the existing Fairfax City? Because I don't think, Mr. Moon, you're considering asking Fairfax City not to be on it. You're talking about adding an additional person, which, from the board, which would be similar to how the audit committee works. And so if, where there are four plus two citizen members, so it's a larger group.
You know, we could, we could have a four Fairfax County Board members plus one non-voting city board members to participate. But that non-voting, maybe not to be counted toward the quorum. I mean, something, something like that. Because, I mean, again, again, if this becomes just like any other standing committee, such as a governance committee or an audit committee playing very important roles, which the CPDC is going to be doing with your advocacy, that I'm just comparing between two school districts.
I'm happy to take that, Ms. Corbett Sanders, back to the committee. The only thing I will also say is that the more people you add, the more complex it becomes in terms of scheduling meetings. Is, you know, it's another layer of ensuring availability. And of course, we have a lot of meetings. So it's just a thought.
We have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamara. And then I would like to finish this conversation so that we can move on to the audit work plan. I understand, I believe Ms. Coe's here.
Yes, hello.
And we don't want to keep people waiting.
So I appreciate CPDC bringing this unanimous recommendation to the board. In the time I have served on the board, I believe I share the perspective of the Fairfax County School Board, which is we are grossly underfunded in renovating and maintaining our 200 schools. And it's not getting any better in the six and a half years I've been here. I think that the public, if we were to show them what our standing subcommittees are, would be unpleasantly surprised if they found out that something like facilities is not one of our core focus as a board. So I hope my colleagues will support the unanimous recommendation that's come from CPDC. It's something that a lot of us have been talking about for six and a half years. Just recently, there was a very big community concern that you all got copied on, where our elementary schools, they're not getting renovated. It's taking 37 to 40 years. And the community is looking at carpets that are, you know, almost 25 years old. They're fraying, they're torn, and parents are worried about, you know, that the health of their kids. And even if that's cosmetic, the bottom line is Mr. Plattenberg's shop lost over $3 million in annual maintenance funding during the recession. We just can't keep turning to our community and saying, we're really sorry. There's just not enough money. And I think the board needs to be more intentional in its work. I agree with Mr. Moon. If we change and alter the scope and this becomes a Fairfax County School Board Standing Committee with some more intentional and, and very important work, I, I think that we can have that gentle conversation with the city board that we've changed the scope of this and we would welcome their participation. But I think that all of our other standing committees benefit from having four board members on it. You know, if you have a third of the board doing some subcommittee work, that's a good thing. have a third of the board doing some subcommittee work, that's a good thing. So to Mr. Moon's point, I, I would support adding another board member on it. I agree with Ms. Corbett Sanders that our audit committee has grown from the time I was on the board, from two to three to now four school board members plus our two citizens. So they can make it work with, you know, six members. I, I absolutely think we can as well. So I, I just don't want to see us overtalk this thing yet again. So I, you know, Ms. Corbett Sanders, I got to tell you, everybody's had their time to speak. As chair, I know you've had the liberty to be able to weigh in when you've wanted to along the way. It is what it is. So I, I just don't, I don't want to walk away again while we're going into our July recess going, we'll take it up in September. This is not a hard one. I think we've got to just start getting to our work.
I just, I want to acknowledge what you said about the elementary schools. And I will tell you that the biggest shock that we had in, in the CPDC meetings over the course of this year was when we found out that the, the, the facility staff is run so thin, but they actually have to spend time rebuilding trailers, like taking down and rebuilding. And, you know, that was just, you know, we were flabbergasted when we heard that. So that is the kind of thing that certainly I think this committee could, could work on.
I just want to conclude with, I liked what Ms. Palczuk said. I actually think that who, whoever is the school's planning committee liaison, that we would have one of them also serving on CPDC. I think that's a great connector. And I, I think that makes perfect sense. So since we're about to do our committee assignments anyway, you know, that, that, and Ms. Corbett Sanders saying that that's the proposal that we'll be voting on on Thursday, that there'd be the connecting between CPDC and the Schools Planning Commission Committee.
So we are going to finish with Ms. Keys-Gamara, and then we will take a vote by the board as to whether they can support this.
I'm going to begin with an apology to Ms. Schultz. I didn't quite understand our discussion in the CPDC. And I had, who, were we supposed to have four school, Fairfax County School Board members on CPDC? Okay. Because it was primarily for most meetings, it was me and Ms. Schultz that were there for, for the discussions. And so that is a bit concerning to me. But when we did discuss about being able to participate more largely in these conversations, I took it to mean that we would bring information to the board much more fully. This is, I'm a little uncomfortable with a kind of a blank check as to what the expansion would be. So, you know, I'm, I guess I'm not understanding the expansion of the role. And I would like to have, I think I would feel more comfortable having a proposal from CPDC actually outlining what that would be. Or would you like to clarify what that is, Ms. Schultz?
I'm sorry, I thought we just did that. The, the plan is, right now, all CPDC does before you, before you joined the board, CPDC didn't meet unless somebody left from FPAC. So there was no purpose for CPDC. Now it is, and we had, we had a lot of meetings where, where Toby was there from Fairfax and Tom was, I mean, there was plenty of meetings. And the idea is, is to be working with FPAC, have somebody from FPAC, Karen Hogan was the one who attended this entire time. She was there for every meeting, is have these discussions about what's happening with the CIP, what the facility needs are, how we can be more intentional with the work of the board, with the Board of Supervisors, what other avenues the board may want to pursue in terms of funding, in terms of shortening the renovation cycle, what the opportunities are to enhance facility access for, to shorten the pre-K waiting list that's always like, you know, north of 800 that we can never meet. And, but, but it wouldn't be, it, it needs to be the next CPDC group that brings a set of recommendations to this board on what it would focus on for the coming year.
I, I have that, I have that understanding. I wanted to clarify because you reported there was a unanimous decision at the CPDC level. I think I had a miss, a different understanding than what you described. And I, I would like for the board to provide direction to CPDC with respect to how they would proceed.
That's, that's exactly what the recommendation is.
Okay.
Okay. With that, can I see a show of hands from the board who can support having CPDC, a reconvened CPDC with currently three members of the school board and possibly a fourth member of the school board in addition to the City of Fairfax representative to do some scoping at their first meeting in September to present to this board what their work will be in the 2019, 2020 year, school year or fiscal, calendar year, so that this board can approve that scoping of work and allow the committee to go forward with intentionality. Does that capture it? Okay. So we have everybody, we have Ms. Palczuk, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, Ms. Schultz, and anybody against? And one abstaining, being Ms. Hines. Thank you. I, I apologize, Ms. Hines and Ms. Coe, that we are 10 minutes behind. We did start five minutes late, so we spent a little bit more time than expected, but the floor is yours and I'm hoping you can catch us up to a six o'clock stop.
Okay, thank you very much. We have our, part of our OAG staff coming to join us, Teresa and Esther. Thank you so much for being here. And so, just to start us off, as we all know, this is something that the board does every year. We put together a new audit plan for the fiscal year. We have gotten all the reports on last fiscal year's audit plan finished. And at our last regular business meeting, our, our auditor general, Ms. Coe, presented to the board the work, the plan for FY19 risk, risk assessment and audit plan. So this is our opportunity to ask questions. We will be voting on this this coming Thursday. We do kind of have, we do have a hard deadline on that as a board because the OAG would like to get started working on it during, during our August recess. All right. So is there, are there any opening remarks you'd like to make, Ms. Coe? Or should we just start with questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hines. So I echoed exactly what Ms. Hines had said. So after the presentation, I also sent out some more information to the school board members, particularly surrounding the topics with the financial implications and also the preliminary audit scopes on a piece of paper. And that is also uploaded to the school board docs as well. So you can pull up the agenda for today. Yes, thank you. So it is at my back, so you can see that too. And all the information is extracted from the full report. So with that, if you all have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Okay. So the audit committee has seen this and asked questions, including the citizen members of the audit committee. There were some board members at our last, at our general membership meeting who asked questions, and Esther has done her best with these additional, this additional information to answer those questions. Is there anything, anyone who'd like to speak? Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you very much. I have, have no problem supporting this, particularly with the understanding that the audit committee has vetted it and looked through it and supported it. I will say that in the appendix, I, I was surprised at the degree to which, that there, that there wasn't more school board member recommendations going into it. And so I, I did weigh in. So am I to assume that it was the four audit committee members and myself that weighed in? Or maybe that you don't want to say. That's all right if you don't want to say. But I guess I feel that going forward in the future, because this is the school board's audit plan, that all of us really should be looking at this. You know, if you could go to the appendix. Can you, can you pull up the appendix? I mean, there are some, there are some things that I believe are on there, and I don't, I don't have it up on my screen right now. But it does appear that there are some things that are, that are top priorities where no board member had expressed an interest in it. Is that correct or no?
So, thank you, Ms. Evans, for the question. We get five responses from school board members, including the audit committee citizen members as well. And then at the same time, like Ms. Hines has described, we discussed this plan in details with the audit committees two times in the May and June meetings.
So audit committee members may have weighed in there as opposed to filling out the form. Is that what you're telling me? Okay. So it may be four plus five, which, which gives a slightly different cast on it. Okay. But I'm sorry, I interrupted you. You were going to say something more about the, 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 the board member interest in, in different things. I mean, I do see, we've, we've got some places up there where, and let me pull it up, I should have pulled it up first, that, you know, there's, there's only minimal interest from, from board members in doing certain things. And, and yet they're, they're top priorities.
So if I may comment, right, like the plan when we developed, and I, my hope is to develop a balanced plan. And of course, the school board members' feedback is very important. And at the same time, I try to weigh in also the other factors that I think you all are very interested at. For example, reputational risk, for example, financial implication, how much are we talking about for that topics? We also looked at the neighboring school districts about what are the other hot audit topics that they are looking at so that we can make sure that, that maybe we cannot think about them from the school board members or from the LT members, but then I can include that as a considerations in the plan. So after looking at all these factors, we try to prioritize things into different categories. With the one that, that I think can create the most, you know, the benefits for the school system for FY19, I put them under primary. But for the rest of the topics, they are still under key consideration, for example, as secondary priorities in the years to come. So we keep all the topics here and we take the voices and understanding from different parties, especially from the school board members. And then we are hoping that in the coming years, we will reconsider them because we don't know, right? One year from now, maybe there are other topics that we need to reprioritize. And we are coming up with this plan also considering the resources that my office have too, so that we can try to tackle different departments, looking at different sizes, issues and challenges, and try to cover to have a balanced plan as a result.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
I'm looking at the financial impact and preliminary audit scope, probably including some other places as well. Looking at the last item, use of trades and staffing reserves. And on the far right-hand column at the bottom, it is stated that, I guess this is per, oh, audit scope, preliminary audit, audit scope. The very last one is to assess the operating effectiveness of internal controls. Could you explain a little bit about what you are looking for, what you want to look into?
Sure. So when we looked at internal controls, there are mainly two different aspects. One is the design of the controls. So meaning that, that when we come up with certain control process, does the design sounds reasonable? So it's setting up a control perspective. And here is more about the operation of the control. For example, that we set up a control to say that, that school board members need to approve certain things over certain threshold. This is the design of the control. And then here we are testing if that particular control is working effectively or not through sampling of the actual transactions.
Okay, so you're not, okay, I'm, I'm trying to see whether I understood you. Okay. So each principal has a discretion to, okay, maybe, maybe it's a combining both trades and staffing reserves. But I was more, I was focusing on trades, trades. But as far as the trade is concerned, school principals, building principals have a discretion to do some trades. Are you going to also looking at the operating effectiveness of internal controls? Because we, I don't think we give them a certain criteria, any, any rule, any, any school board defined principles under which they are to or not to make those trades. Do we? I mean, what are you looking at?
So that's a great question. So there are different components, right? Definitely the principals will be proposing the trading objects, right, the subjects, what to be traded, to trade into what. But I believe that there is a authorization and review process that the regional assistant superintendent will review the justification to say, hmm, does it means reasonable and do I, should I approve or should I not approve? So that by itself is a control. Like you have other people in the process to review. Then I am not sure if the COO or someone else from, from finance may be also looking at it from another set of eyes as well. So those are the review controls that we have that will build into part of the testing. But you are correct too, Mr. Moon, that this particular step also refer to the testing for the staffing, the use of the staffing reserve, the controls over there as well.
Okay, that, my, my main question is, now, now this one. When someone trades, let's say one position with another position, or trade some other non-position funding, local fund for position, then will you be also looking at whether that's the best way to use their money or positions? Is that something that you are going to be looking into?
I, I believe that what we are going to report back to the audit committee and the school board is to do more analysis and deep dive about how we use the resources, school-based and department-based, and to try to give more information to the school board to make decisions.
So this is a sort of board of information collecting and analyzing the information as opposed to making a judgment call on a, a, some departments or some schools use a, a, a practice of trades?
Yes.
You're not going to come around and say the school A should not have traded that money for this position or this position with that position? That's not going to be your work.
I believe likely not. Is it, Teresa, you have something else to add?
I think we, as we look at these, there are parameters and guidelines that I think have to be followed, that are provided to principals and the regions. And I think, Mr. Smith, if you could chime in, there have been in cases in the past where schools have traded to such an extent that they've, they have a shortfall in providing for their school resources. And those situations make hardship on the student body and the parents for providing, you know, send me in reams of paper because we don't have money to buy paper. If certain situations result in that, I think that's something we would highlight.
That's more of a control.
That's more of overlooking the overarching controls and guidelines that schools are supposed to be following as they do the trades.
And then I think as an add-on, Mr. Moon, it would be incumbent upon us as staff to then use that information. So I would imagine our ARAS would be working closely with our principals to have discussions. And they're currently having discussions about the types of trades that they're making. But they could also use this information to help principals as they're making those decisions within their buildings. We will also be looking at, at that same type of process as we look at our trades that are happening in our departments as well.
Okay. Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. McLaughlin?
I support what is being proposed as the audit plan, and I very much appreciate the focus on controls. And again, as you take a look at these various areas, whether or not, controls are sufficient. And, and as, I really, I appreciate also Mr. Moon's questioning because if, if the controls are not sufficient, then I'm assuming you will let us know. And as Mr. Smith said, that, that is something that we would need to know. So the focus on controls, the focus on risk, and then dollar amount. You, you only have so many staff members and so many staff hours to, to be able to get the work done. And knowing and listening to my colleagues as to those areas that there is concern, I believe that in your tally of primary concern, I think that, that you have answered a number of things that I know my colleagues have been very much concerned about. a number of things that I know my colleagues have been very much concerned about. And I very much appreciate the entire comment on the universe of all those things, of the, what are the 40 things that you looked at? So that we can see primary, secondary, long-term and where there is no interest, either because it's such a small dollar amount or there is just nothing more to be gained by that. So we, we have a very full picture of how you analyzed this, how you came up with it. So I'm, I'm very pleased with this plan coming forward. And I also have to say, I've been very pleased with how you have answered various questions from the community. And again, being able to look professionally at the role of the Auditor General and controls, risk, finances, so a very professional job, thank you very much.
Ms. McLaughlin, then Mrs. Schultz, then Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
Great, thank you. In looking at this, one of the things that crossed my mind, and I, first of all, I appreciate adding the dollar amounts. I think that's really helpful because the enterprise and how large we are and as Ms. Strauss noted, the limited staffing and time, we, we do have to prioritize what we're going to focus and, and look at. And we run into this challenge as an, as an educational institution and now I think even with OAG that sometimes we tend to use language that's very industry-laden and not layperson-laden. So I'm, I'm reading this report and while it's very detailed, if the public were to look at it, especially people who don't have an audit or finance background, I'm not sure they can appreciate necessarily so, the so what? So what do we hope to, that we'll gain from this? Like, in other words, when you mentioned your expertise and, and, and that's why we have you in this role to identify reputational risk and where do we focus? And I'm so thankful that that's how it's being presented to us now because I used to say, with how large we are, I mean, that's like picking a needle at a haystack to say, let's go look over here. So your professional expertise in the Audit Committee, especially our, our citizen appointees with that expertise, all of that is so important. But, and so I don't have any problems at all with what you've outlined for it. I guess I was just kind of hoping we might somehow be able to have almost like a layperson's one pager on here's how this could improve our system, you know? And, and I think that was maybe sort of the primary input I wanted to receive and see if, as our Auditor General, if A, what I'm describing is even making sense or, and if so, could we think about doing that, something that's just kind of a one pager so that the community and the public and when we go out and explain, here's where our areas of focus is, yes, we can say, you know, why this is fiscally important. But that other column about the, the scope, I was kind of hoping we could have a little bit of, through this information, we hope to improve the following. You know, because internal controls, again, for a lot of people who don't do finance and accounting, that's sort of like, okay, that's, it sounds good, but, but what does it really translate, especially for our employees and our families to feel that they can appreciate the important work this is? Is my input making sense at all?
Yes, of course, and first of all, I apologize because I have been doing audit for the past 20 years. And sometimes I'm using terminology that I understand but may not be well received by others. So definitely points well taken and thank you. We have been doing some kind of like video for OAG and you may think, okay, what are you going to do instead of just Esther Coles talking? We actually make some video clips to introduce what the internal audit process is to our FCPS employees, exactly like what Megan you say, use more, you know, down-to-earth, regular people term, people can understand to make into those clips. And definitely, I think this is a great idea. In this year, I really want to do more user-friendly communication, right? With, first, I would like to start with FCPS team members and then later I really want to like share with the community more, so, the so what piece about, okay, we have this preliminary audit scope, so where we are trying to reach. Within the audit plan, I use the terminology of potential concerns or potential areas of concerns to share with you all and the public about why those topics are selected. So it's more about the so what, but I'm thinking those language may be still a little bit too technical and we can think of some more better way to communicate.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking that maybe it's kind of just adding one additional step, which, or, you know, one additional, you know, statement, which would simply be that, okay, so here's what we're trying, you know, here, so what we're looking for. From this information, we hope to improve what? In terms of, that, that's the layperson part of, by doing this scoped work, it can help with the following, you know, what is it? Is it helping us with our, our budgeting challenges? Is it helping us with, you know, our employee, you know, accuracy for pay? Just, that's, that's the piece where it's, really wouldn't be maybe more than a couple of sentences, but it would be a way for, I think, the audit plan to be more intellectually accessible to people who don't do finance and audit work to say, okay, so for, for the, the general public, how can I appreciate what this is that the work's being done? So I, I don't want to say changing this, I'm just saying it might be nice if we get a sentence or two.
Hey, Ms. Schultz?
Ms. Hines, Mr. Smith has a comment he would like to add, I'm sorry.
And I certainly wouldn't want to speak for Ms. Coe, but I know that in doing this work in ORSE, sometimes to ORSE, the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement, in order to be as neutral and as objective as possible, I know that whenever we go into an evaluation, we always go where the data leads us and where the, the, the facts and information lead us. And so when we think about what we're looking for, I think that, that it's really about informing a process and there could be room for improvement or there could be information that shows that, hey, we're doing just great. So I, I don't know if always looking for that improvement, we're looking for that effectiveness and the efficiency and, and looking on how we can inform these practices. And then really it's incumbent upon the board to use that for policy work and then for staff to then use that information to change practice if that's a recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz?
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe address a little bit where Ms. Evans is going because it seemed like you were a little bit surprised about the written comments. And I'll just say, for, for me, I felt like the conversation that, because we all spoke with Ms. Coe, the conversation that I had elevated some of the concerns. And then certainly the work session and tying together the, the scope of the potential audit segments to the scope of money, like the scope of risk, you know? And I feel like what eventually wound up here is better than where, where it started for me. Because I don't think if we don't tie potential audit areas to money and risk, then there's a lack of understanding and I also think a lack of transparency. So I just wanted, I don't know if that makes you feel any better over the fact that there aren't necessarily written comments, but I, I do feel like that maybe some of us conveyed them in a different way.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the Audit Committee and Ms. Coe and her staff for the excellent work you're doing. This is really, having seen it evolve over time, I've been impressed. I understand, you know, I'm glad Ms. Schultz raised the, or reiterated the risk and budget impacts because I think that's really a lot of what you're doing. A particular note of appreciation is how you are taking some of the studies that you have already done and extending them or deepening them in the area of contracts and then tying in the other priorities of the, of this board and frankly, I think the broader community with the safety and security compliance. I think those are really good add-ons and I'm very pleased to see the trades and staffing work being done as well. So I am happy to support this. And once again, I just want to thank you with, thank you for the manner in which you approach your work. It is truly, you know, you, you bring to it the critical thinking and analysis that we want in an auditor, auditor general. But you also bring to it a spirit of collaboration which is, allows this board and FCPS to continue to focus on process improvement. And that is something that is a, a belief that everybody around this board is, is fully supportive of, so thank you for your work.
If there isn't anything else, I would also like to thank the Office of the Auditor General. And we are now at the one-year anniversary of Ms. Coe's time with us, so I think we should congratulate you on that and congratulate us on hiring you because I think it was a very good decision. Those, those relationships are really important, we know that in education and in any kind of work that people do. And we have to thank staff as well as chair, for chairing the Audit Committee for the last year. I have seen firsthand how well staff has worked with the Office of the Auditor General.
And if I could just add, we have truly enjoyed working with the Office of the Auditor General this year. Ms. Coe brings a, a level of professionalism, collaborative spirit, and, and she does hold our feet to the fire and, and those recommendations that she provides, we do take that very seriously and are always focused on that continual process improvement.
Sure, and a part of the work of the Audit Committee for the next year will be following up on a lot of those recommendations. So, so thank you. I'm assuming from our conversation so far that there will be no amendments of the audit plan coming up for Thursday, so we should be in shape to adopt it. Thank you so much. Anything, anything else?
Thank you, everyone, we are early, so really appreciate it, so we can save some time for strategic plans. Thank you, everyone.
Let's take a three-minute break.